Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular meeting of this common council for the city of Hudson for Monday, December 2nd. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll, please.
Virtual.
Here.
Alder Person, Smarseth.
Here.
Yahoo.
Here.
Bernard.
Here.
Tewinkle.
Here.
Hoggatt.
Here.
Vansel.
Here.
At this point in the agenda, we invite anyone in the audience that wants to speak to the council about an item not on the agenda, now is your time to come up to the front and speak your piece or let us know what you'd like to tell us or ask us. So, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council on any item that is not on the agenda tonight? If not, we'll move on to consent agenda items.
To approve the regular minute, meeting minutes of November 18th, 2013, to approve payment of the following claims in the amount of $363,551.85, which includes the amount originally posted and an additional invoice of $18,605 approved by the finance committee earlier this evening for the replacement dock at Lakefront Park. There were no operator's licenses for consideration. To authorize the mayor and city administrator to approve any necessary year-end payments for 2013 vouchers and invoices that cannot be delayed until the January 13th, 2014 council meeting and to place on file the semi-annual report of the IT coordinator. That is all.
Move for approval.
Okay.
Roll call.
Smarseth.
Yes.
Tewinkle.
Yes.
Yahoo.
Yes.
Hoggatt.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Vansel.
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the planning commission, consider issuing of a start-to-construct permit to the Hudson Center Holdings LLC for a commercial building in the Hudson Center, Commercial Development Center at the former visitor center. Mr. Donald.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Planning Commission recommends approval of a footings and foundation permit or a start-to-construct permit to be issued to Hudson Holdings LLC. They're the developer of the purchased and are the developer of the old former state visitor site. Planning Commission recommends approval of the footings and foundation permit with the condition that a $6,000 letter of credit or security be provided to the city of Hudson. Mr. Matt Frisby, the project architect, is here tonight. Also, Mr. Alan Catchpool, the project engineer, is here tonight. The purpose of only recommending issuance of a footings and foundation permit or a start-to-construct permit is that there's two buildings proposed in the first phase of the Hudson Center. There's a Westerly Building, which can be built entirely on the current parcel as it exists with their ancillary parking, drive-through lanes, and so forth. Eastroy Building encumbers part of the Taco Bell property, and they're currently working on a land trade of change with the owner of Taco Bell. But until that's finished, I do not feel comfortable recommending approval to the planning commission, nor did the planning commission feel comfortable recommending to you that a footings and foundation permit be issued because if something goes wrong, then we've made an investment in that Eastroy Building, and we don't want that to happen either. So, Mr. Frisby and Mr. Catchpool are here tonight. If you want to hear some comments or see the overall presentation from them. But again, Planning Commission recommends footings and foundation permit or a start-to-construct permit for the Westerly, the two buildings proposed. It's 11,171 square feet, be a multi-tenant commercial building, perhaps comprised of restaurants, coffee shops, other retail spaces. However, no particular tenant has been announced by the developer to date.
I'll move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? Any questions for Mr. Frisby? I think you've seen these, you've seen these, I think there's, there's only one change that they made another wider on the, would it be the far east buildings for a drive-through?
If that, you know, if the land exchange trade moves through, the planning commission has actually approved the development plans for both buildings and the site, but we're holding that approval until the land exchange is completed, so we don't have that as an issue.
Is that just a matter of time with the land exchange here?
They're thinking it'll be done in February or March.
So, does any of the back of these buildings will be facing Crestview Drive?
The back of the buildings be facing Crestview Drive. Matt can probably explain, if you want to, explain what they're doing to enhance the amenities of the backside of the buildings, but really both, because the internal road the buildings be facing, so the back of the buildings on the north side of the road will face I-94, back of the buildings on Crestview, or internal road will face Crestview Drive. So, the internal road will be the frontage road for the, for the businesses.
Okay. I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind seeing what they've got planned for the... Yeah, it's in your, it's in, it's about, you have those along, Matt?
Yes.
It should be the colored brochure that you, or slide that we have.
Matt, if you want to take the whiteboard off, you can put it on that easel there.
Okay. Thank you. So, to your question, this would be the, the north side, so facing the interior parking lot, but we've mirrored that to duplicate it on the roadside. Some of these tenants may have glass and window in them, other ones might just have a service door, but the, the brick, the stucco, some of the architectural elements will still show up on, on the main drive, too, so.
That's a, that's a nice idea.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Mr. Frisby? Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consider a FOTH engineering proposal on a roundabout at Wisconsin Street and Vine Street. The, the finance committee recommended, Karen, are you still here?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Why don't you go through what you did in finance for us as far as what we're trying to accomplish here?
Okay, this might have worded a little incorrectly, not around...
I know, not study the intersection.
Yeah, it's an intersection study, and FOTH brought this study to public works commission, being proactive at that intersection of Wisconsin Street and Vine Street. We have in the past heard discussions about possibly doing some improvements at that intersection, and we recommended that you do a, a traffic count and traffic study and see what would be best at that intersection, whether it's four-way stop or traffic signal or a roundabout. What we propose is to do a manual traffic count, so we'd have someone physically on-site at both an AM and peak, AM and PM, peak time, and do the counts, and then come back and model it to see what would be best at that intersection. Then we'd bring our reports and our findings back to council, and if directed, we would then do a geometric layout and coordinate the work with the Wisconsin Street project. What we're trying to prevent happening is that Wisconsin Street's constructed, and then several years later, we come back and we have to rip it up so we can get the intersection improvements at that location done.
Why don't you update on Vine Street, or Wisconsin Street grant that we're receiving? It should be 2015?
Construction, right, construction would be 2015 on Wisconsin Street. So, we have time if we do this study now to coordinate with the engineers that are designing Wisconsin Street and get any recommend layouts into their design.
Will that include the, I guess, the west, there's a, out from the high school parking lot, there's the ability to go out, and people are trying to go left and then into the four-way stop. It's, gets pretty jammed up in there, and if you're coming up Vine Street, and then all these people are trying to get out of the high school, they're trying to leave in both ways, and so even a roundabout would still have an issue with that feeder from the high school parking lot.
Second drive to the west of the main...
Oh, yes, yes, I know what you're, just west of that entrance.
That's right.
We're not doing that study there, but we do know that that exists, or traffic counts, I should say, we're not, we're not, that wasn't part of the, the study.
I was just wondering if it, it's definitely has a bearing on that intersection.
Of how many people come out there, and you can see it from, if you're sitting at the right point, you can see that, right? I think you can, because it's flat.
It's, it's closed off during the school day, and then it's opened up after.
When they're leaving and entering school. So, we should, we would be able to get that counted.
It looks very dysfunctional when you're sitting there when school gets out.
And it's an exit only, also.
Okay, so it would just be basically at the...
And a school.
End of schooling.
Correct.
Or a drop-off in the beginning.
Well, in the beginning of this, yeah.
With people leaving.
Right.
Yeah. Questions for Karen?
I'll move for approval for the study up to $9,000 on the first phase.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Karen. Item 6C, consider police department request to purchase a second squad car vehicle from 2014. I think you have the issue sheet. Chief is here to answer any questions you have. I think the finance recommended we do this, we, we'll get the money from partial the equipment.
There are funds, as vehicles have been sold over the past few years, there's funds that have been brought in. Neil and I will go through and verify that amount, and then whatever remainder there is, then moved from the contingency in this next year's budget to the...
And we would be reducing the fleet by one. He's, we've had two new cars purchased, and then three will be disposed of or sold.
And we're also using the funds from the vehicles we're selling now.
That's the, yeah.
Yeah.
We figure three to, Marty, three to $4,000 a car?
Yeah.
That we should get somewhere there.
On average, when we've sold the vehicles at auction, we've gotten anywhere between thirty, between $3,000 and $4,000. On average, around $3,500.
So, if we were to say we're going to get roughly nine grand, just to be on the safe side, anything else would be, would come out of that other fund?
What we would probably do administratively is just take it out, whatever the difference is, out of contingency, now and then whatever the sales were, then we'd move the money back in whenever that takes place.
By the time we get the cars, strip them, and then send them to Sweeney's, they might not have an auction again until June.
Right.
So, it might be in July sometime before we get that check.
Okay. Questions, comments?
And we will notify the council of the amounts once we determine that.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 6D, consider approval, approval of a position description for the proposed fire, chief fire inspector position and authorization for the city administrator to proceed with the recruitment of candidates. I think you have the issue sheets in front of you. We made a couple changes. Devin, you have those?
Yeah, the finance committee, under the job requirements, instead of having a bachelor's degree specifically in fire administration and public administration, the change was made to say bachelor's degree with preference given to degrees in fire administration and public administration. And a little bit further down where it talks about the NIM certification, we're going to clarify with the fire chief. 700 to 800 levels, certain aspects of that apply only to large-scale, you know, interstate emergencies or national emergencies. So, those type of things, we may probably put preferred instead of mandatory, because a lot of people probably won't have those. So, we'll clarify that with the fire chief.
Wasn't one of the issues there, if we have someone from the central part of the state, they don't care about interstate?
Normally wouldn't do it, but...
They wouldn't do it, they don't need to do it, because they're not needing to cooperate with somebody from another state. Mary, you had some, you had some other...
I'd like to ask, I'd like the council to consider some minor changes outside of those, and one would be five years, instead of saying five years at the fire command level, to say five years are preferred, just to keep the...
Rather than required?
Yeah, preferred, yeah.
Anybody have any problem with that?
What's your larger...
I want to keep the field, I want to keep the, keep it more open for people to apply that may have the experience to be able to bring it, bring forth versus making it such as stern, you know, making everything so, so constricted.
You're just talking about the five-year part, not the 10-year part?
Right.
Okay.
And police and fire commission can weed it out as they feel.
But you realize we changed it to, you need a bachelor's degree, period, not preferred.
Bachelor's degree, or, yeah, but it's not, before it was restricted to fire administration or public administration, now you have it at least like as a related field-type concept.
Well, I agree with you, trying to incorporate life experience a little more, because we've just restricted it now to educated people, sort of say.
Well, that's not so much, if I was going to change that line with the bachelor's degree, I would have added fire administration, public administration, or a related field, is what I would have done to keep it broad. But I think desired qual, or to have it say, what do you put it as?
It's just going to say bachelor's degree with preference for those two things.
Right, so that way, bachelor's degree is still there, so that's fine.
It can be bachelor's degree in anything, yes.
Exactly, and so I don't have a problem with how that was changed. Also, my other, my other thing would say, I would like to try and strike out minimum training and experience required to desired qualifications, to keep it still a little more broad for the police and fire.
Where's that at, Mary?
Uh, right after the first sentence, so I would say, under job requirements, would say, after it says protect practices of fire administration, it was, instead of saying minimum training and experience required, I would just like to say desired qualifications to perform the essential functions of the position, the second sentence, under job qualification. Because I want the police and fire commission to have some, some, I, I sat in police and fire commission, so I guess I know how that works, and I want them to be able to have the opportunity to, to have a broader field, broader group of people to choose from, because there's many qualifications, there's, Minnesota has different qualifications than Wisconsin as far as what's, what's required to, to be a chief, and I think that to keep it broad, we'll have a bigger pool of applicants and leave it to police and fire commission to...
Well, let's talk about that process for a second. Devin, you, you screen all, you screen the applications.
Basically, what'll happen is with, they'll, they'll get a summary, they'll have all the applications, and they get a summary of the qualifications, and then they will go through and determine how many they want to interview or if they're going to test or whatever. In this situation where it's an administrative-level position, probably won't have the number of applicants. When we have like 200 police officers, then it's, there's a specific process they have to go through.
Right, we might have 30 applicants, but I want to make sure...
But they'll, they'll be delineated out, you know, and then there'll be what's required and what they have, so they'll be able to see for each.
I just want to make sure that we're able to get a broad spectrum of those 30 applicants, because I think if someone, someone works out and has been working as, has been a full-time firefighter for 30 years and has a bachelor's degree, they could bring a lot of experience in as a fire chief versus, you know, versus some other situations. So, I, I don't want to limit what we could possibly have.
So, the sentence would say desired?
Qualifications to perform.
Yes. But you understand by doing that, you're essentially saying you can have any of these requirements, and you'll be considered.
Yes.
And I think that's far broader than we're really looking, I mean, we need to have some specific requirements of the job. These can't just all be desired traits, and then the pool is much larger, and I would say in a lot of ways more difficult to weed through.
It may be more of a challenge for the police and fire commission, delineate who's...
I don't, I don't, I give them a little more credit, the system they have set up is quite impressive to be able to weed through. I mean, by saying desired, they can still, by the questions they ask, they can still weed out through the questions they ask have set up for, for the fire chief's position. I just want to make sure the pool of applicants is broad enough that we don't miss out on the possibility of, of a, of a good applicant with good experience, yet still has a bachelor's degree that we want for an administrator.
But you're, but by putting it up above all of those job requirements, you're no longer saying a bachelor's degree is required. You're negating that, and you're just saying, we desire any of these things, all of these things, or some of these things. I don't think it's a very clear description at all. I know what you're saying, but we need to be clear about what the minimum job requirements are, and I think this is typically how they're written.
Didn't you get this from...
It's, this is a combination of River Falls, New Richmond, and a couple municipalities that Jim found down by Milwaukee that have a similar full-time chief paid volunteer system.
We have to look at something like, let's say, let's say Minneapolis doesn't need a certain qualification, someone who works in Minneapolis, but they're willing to go get that qualification to take the job. You know, I don't want it to be limited.
Well, I think what we tried to do, and maybe there's specific places that we didn't, but we tried to say or equivalent, or equivalent, because we realized...
Right, but I want to be able to cover it all. I mean, I don't, I don't think, I don't, I mean, I think that if, when if we want to make, you know, make it so that bachelor's degree is not under the desired qualifications, that is an absolute qualification, we can do that. I just want to make sure that we don't, that we give the applicants an opportunity, if they don't have every single certification, that they can get the certifications, if they're, if they're, if they're a good enough applicant to bring to the top of the, of the picking. I mean, we usually, they usually limit down to top 10 and go from there, you know, so...
Some of these, we, we actually say that, though, and the ability to obtain a Wisconsin certification within one year.
Right, some of them, but...
I think, are you thinking that there's not going to be enough qualified applicants, or...
I'm thinking I want to just make sure that we don't necessarily weed out experience, because I think firefighting, I want to make sure we have experience and someone who can administrate.
Well, administration is the, the crux of the position with experience.
Right, but Jim's out there, he's, he was our fire chief, he was out there when the fires were roaring. I mean, he was, you know, in the thick of it, too. I just think that we have a volunteer fire department, there's a situation where we can't get enough people out there, we need someone who can also go out there, you know, and during the daytime, we've, I mean, there was a point where we ran into the situation where we didn't have enough daytime staff that we could get called in, because people work so far out. So, we started concentrating on that.
Well, the second paragraph to me kind of hit the crux of it, and I am on the fire board and went over this for a while with Devin and the other members of the fire board, and the second paragraph states, "This is a full-time seller position with 24-hour responsibility for managing the fire department's operations." So, you know, in a nutshell, it pretty much tells us that this person will be in charge 24/7, that includes going to fires and things like that, and we're hoping that they're going to have a minimum training and experience to put, you know, to be able to perform that job. I don't, I'm not really that in favor of watering it down either. However, if you want to add more on some of these where it says, you know, get the certification with one, one year, I think that's totally legitimate.
I just don't want to be top-heavy administratively and not, not have the guts to be able to fight the fire. I want to make sure they, they are well-rounded enough to do both.
It says a minimum of ten years firefighting experience.
Got to have at least 10 years of firefighting experience.
It's already a minimum of 10 years firefighting experience.
So, Devin, would you say typically when we have job descriptions like this, you get applicants who don't meet all the criteria?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, I think we've probably all applied for jobs where you didn't meet every single criteria, and that's up to...
This is fire commission to determine.
Right. But I don't, but by broadening it so much, Mary, I think you're going to really water down the, you know, the specificity that we're looking for, for the position.
I think we need to be specific on what we want, and I don't, I don't want to water it down.
So, would the only change that we objected to is a desired qualification, otherwise having or related field, and the word preferred put in there would be acceptable?
I like it the way it is, but I don't know where everyone else said I would.
So, Mary, you're proposing under the five years that it be preferred?
Preferred, yes.
At the command level?
Yes, and that it would say, well, the bachelor's degree part, the way it was written, finance is just fine. So, I would just like to have the word preferred minimally through this discussion added in there.
So, the issue that comes in, we can still use a standard of 10 years, but if you had somebody with nine years' experience that was really good, and they fit, he or she fit all the other criteria, under this, we couldn't hire him, correct? Because he didn't, he or she didn't have that...
Unless nobody else had more than nine, I mean, then that would, that would be up to the police or the fire commission.
But I, you know, you can say we want these, that's the minimum requirement that we want, but they're preferred, and then you find an exception to the, I think that's, isn't that what you're saying, is the exception not...
I don't want to miss out on a candidate that...
That has eight years and three years.
Right.
I think we should have something, would that help you?
To review or evaluate all, you know, qualifications of the...
If the fire commission had the ability to say, we still will, if there's someone that doesn't...
Yes, I'd like the fire commission, that be so restricted. I trust them, they've done this a lot, they know what to look for.
Sure.
The system that's in place, police and fire commission is very confidential.
We can leave the other ones in place, then?
Why don't we just put a clause in that says, "But people who don't meet all these requirements will also be considered."
Well, you could say the police and fire commission...
Isn't that what we're saying?
I'm willing to not...
Isn't that basically what we're saying?
No, I'm willing to say, okay, desired qual, I'm willing to say desired qual, we don't have to put desired qualification in, but I don't want to limit someone to the 10 years.
Okay, desired, desired means if you don't meet it, we'll still consider you.
I'm willing to say not, I'm willing not to add that.
Just put a clause in it that says, "If you don't meet all the requirements, we'll still consider you."
I'm willing not to add that. What I'd like to see is preferred for the years' experience, because I think that just exactly what Alan said, he said it better to me probably, but if someone has nine years' experience and can do the job, they should be considered. I don't want keys crossed and eyes done.
I think we all agree to that, don't we, or don't we? You're saying we got to have 10 years.
You know, the other...
Well, it's such an arbitrary number.
Right.
You know, who says that someone with 10 is better than the guy with eight?
Well, here's the thing that you're not considering, and...
But we're never going to be able to consider the guy with eight.
Every position in the fire department, including the assistant chiefs and the captains and lieutenants, all have certain levels of minimum requirements. This is not, this is just sort of an adaptation that continues on above that, and they all have a minimum of firefighting experience, a minimum of command level, and it works its way up. This is not a, this isn't out of the ordinary, we have a whole structure of built, of resumes, and so this is just raising the bar to a person at the command level with a minimum of 10 years firefighting experience.
Right, so we have all these people at this level, but I think, I mean, that, there's, there's, that's a whole nother conversation I could have about all these people at this level, but, and they have all these job qualifications, but we're, we're, it's a volunteer department, so I'm kind of curious as to what we, when we have two lieutenants...
That's a discussion for a different time.
Yeah, I'll just drop that, but, so my point is, I don't want to restrict someone who maybe has eight or nine years' experience, is all I'm saying. I, I don't think that's too much to ask, to make sure we consider, I don't think they're going to consider the guy with one-year experience here.
That's the question, is what's the number?
Well, it's, it's common, I think I give the police and fire commission the commons, the, the fact that they have common sense to be able to, to, to weed this out properly.
What's the minimum for a police chief?
I don't remember.
I believe it was five years, if I remember correctly.
Just curious.
I believe that's what it was.
Marty?
Five, yes, Marty's saying five.
Five years, and they were saying 10 for a fire chief.
The five years' experience or five years as...
Five years as a command, a command level. I don't know that there was a specific number of years for being a police officer.
And what's the minimum for our lieutenants and stuff in the fire department, it's more of...
They're all, they're all elected.
Right, they're all elected, same with...
Well, that's a different discussion for a different time.
I'm saying...
So, trying to do the job description...
So, are you making a motion here, or are we just going to...
I, I, I'm...
What do you want to do, folks?
Sure, I'll make the motion to add, to put five years...
At the command?
Preferred at the fire command, preferred five years.
At the five year, okay.
Yes.
But to leave them 10 years for the firefighting?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion on that? You got that down, Mr. Devin?
Yep.
I'll just make one brief, brief comment. I don't think the 10 years' experience is unreasonable, given that they may be volunteers and on a very part-time basis. You know what I'm saying? 10 years at that level is not, that's not an unreasonable thing to ask, so...
So, this is for five years at the command level, preferred, is that what you're saying?
So, just to summarize, the changes that are being made is the bachelor's degree with preference given to fire administration, public administration, five years command level is preferred, and we're going to verify the NIM's training requirements. Those are the three changes from what you were given.
Yes.
Questions, comments?
The only thing we're doing is, the job description is a screening process in itself, so it screens applicants for you right out of the gate, and you're getting the people that you want to apply to this, applying for it. When you start watering it down, you know, you've taken away your screening process, and I'm not in favor of doing that.
Okay. One more thing, the last bullet on the first page, do we need to add a time period? Because otherwise, at this point, it's saying you need to live in Hudson right now.
Yeah, within one year, is that reasonable?
I think that's fair.
type employees.
I think it was fifteen miles. But the firefighters are required to be in the, that's what they've always done here, firefighters.
Well, what they've always done and what the law allows, I think we need to review that and look at it.
I think there's a, it was okay for police and fire to be within a certain period.
We'll ver...
Within a certain number of miles, I think, not city limits.
Okay, we'll ver, we'll verify that. We'll put whatever needs to be put in there.
Yeah, just look at it, whatever the law allows.
Okay.
Just the way I read it right now is...
You're right, Kurt, we'll, we'll get that fixed. Either we'll take it all completely if we're not allowed to have it, or we'll put a one-year, okay?
And a mile off.
I think it's twenty-five.
I think it's twenty-five miles.
I do too.
Okay.
Because New Richmond, we have police officers in New Richmond.
They have a contract, so that, a contract is fifteen.
Let's look it up.
All right, let's just...
Okay, anybody have anything else? Are we ready to vote, or do we need more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay. Next item is Public Works Committee, consider changes at snow plowing route at EP Rock. Notification to property owners.
So this was requested to be put on the agenda last meeting by Lori and all the property owners that were...
Notified.
Notified.
So can I recap it?
Sure.
Tom, maybe you want to come up too.
Tom, are you available? He's got to be back there somewhere.
So this came to Public Works in, yeah, in October, and it came through a request from the school district. In the past, we have essentially plowed the snow around the block that EP Rock is on, so Freer, Hoyt, Summer, and Thirteenth. The city has plowed all of that snow on those streets toward the school property. The school district approached public safety and asked that we change the way that we plow there so that their snowbanks aren't unduly high, and there were safety concerns on the part of the school district. Like I mentioned, it came to Public Works. It was unbeknownst really to all of us, I think, that it was being done that way, given the safety concern that was brought up and extra work that Tom Zulley mentioned it causes Public Works. We approved that change. I mean, Tom doesn't typically come to Public Works and ask us how he can plow the roads. He did it out of courtesy, I think, you know, because it had come from the school district. After that was voted on, letters went out to residents that would be affected. Several of them were upset, and I thought it'd be a good opportunity to bring it back to full council for further discussion so that everyone here had a chance to listen to the situation and vote on it, and residents had a chance to be heard, which they felt like they hadn't had, so.
If I can add one thing, also, just in the public safety aspect, when it came to public sa, I didn't, when it was emailed to me as Public Safety Chair, one of the big concerns of the school was that when the snow piles up on the side of the school, the sidewalks also have snow on them, and that sometimes it gets built to the point where the school district themselves cannot plow through the sidewalks efficiently, and the kids start walking on the street. And they want their sidewalks to stay clear, which I think they should have that right, to have their sidewalks staying clear. The snowbanks that get built up, I have kids at EP Rock, Kurt has kids at EP, you have kids at EP Rock, we all, I mean, snowbanks are not anymore, oh, you did. So the snowbanks are, are high around the area, and that was the biggest concern, was the safety of the kids being able to walk home or get picked up.
Okay. Why don't you, Tom, explain what you have been doing and what you're going to be doing, or what you propose, what you do on your plowing. So we get a little background on what's going on here, because not all of us, we're at Public Works.
Well, like Lori said, that this was initiated by a request from the school and, and some safety concerns. It's something we have been doing for many years, like some of the letters that we have received. A couple things that I, you know, I mean, ultimately, safety is our biggest concern, not only for the students, but also for the people that are driving around the school. And, you know, this is something that we've talked about a lot with our staff. Trucks are big, visibility is low, and it's very hard. This is, when we plow one direction, it kind of goes away, goes from the natural scheme of our plowing road. You usually go centerline, half of this road, half this way. When we start plowing everything one way, some of the concerns that we have from our staff is that we are plowing, we have a big truck on one side of the street, and we're pushing all the snow on this side. Sometimes when there's a little amount of snow, it's not a big thing. But when we get a five, six, eight inches, and you start plowing that first pass, you have a mound of snow on, from the centerline over, you've got a big truck here, and we've, and several occasions, the guys said, hey, we have a safety deal here because we're blocking the whole street. We're, a car's coming up for this street, where do they go? Where do we go? So it's a safety thing for plowing, it just goes away from the natural scheme of plowing. So we, I felt that it was important to get the letter out to you people. I know most of you people. I sit next to you in church. I golf with Al, largely because I have one of his, Alan's son worked for the Public Works Department. There's a lot of concerns, and the biggest thing is that we have, we have safety issues. On Summer Street, I can go through just about every street and say, you know, tell you my concerns. Summer Street, we push all the snow toward painted walkpath. Maybe you have an inch or two of snow, it's not a big problem, but when we get large amounts of snow, that walkpath, we can't get it wide enough until we come back. I have a map up here, a couple maps I'd like to show you guys, and I think one of them got taken down, but...
We weren't sure what they were for. We weren't sure what they were.
I'll just hold this down. We can, you guys can see it. This is a map from nineteen sixty-four, and you can kind of see that this is kind of the old part of town, that's what I call it, you know, you know, the downtown area. Over the course of time, you know, Hudson has grown. This is probably, I hope you guys can see it.
Why don't you turn it, Tom?
Turn it towards Catherine, here.
There you go.
Or it's on TV now.
Here's basically what we looked at with this map, nineteen sixty-four. Here's what we're looking at right now. All of this. I think, I estimated this about forty miles of road, but we have to talk about lane miles. Back then, we had eighty lane miles of road, roughly. Now we've got seventy-five miles of roads, but a lot of our roads are four-lane, so we're looking at probably over two hundred lane miles of streets. Back here, we had three left, three more people back in, you know, the early eighties. We had two designated people from the wastewater plant, and another full-time people. Both those positions from the wastewater have got absorbed into the wastewater plant. Their job duties have increased, and those positions are not available. We had a full-time parks guy, a job eliminated a few years back, so we're three people short from here, back in thirty-five years ago. We have people up in this, Business Park has grown so fast, I mean, we have people that Uline, Valley Cottage, Cardinal Glass, they want to get plowed out also. We have some snowfalls that, some of these developments, Red Cedar Canyon, didn't get plowed out for eight, eight hours, eight, ten hours. We have to be fair to the rest of the community. I've sat down with staff, and I said, well, how much longer does it take to plow around the school one way? And they said, well, it, it magnifies. The more snow that we have, it takes longer. So like I said, we wanted to be fair, we wanted to, you know, get your involvement, it was, it's really good to see all you guys, but we have to look at the big picture. I know you guys got sixteen or twenty feet of, at the end of your driveway that's very, very important to you. We have over two hundred lane miles of street that we have to be fair to the whole city.
Tom, I have a question, is there any other place in the city we plow this way?
Over the, over the course of time, we've had, you know, a few spots, but we've kind of slowly eliminated those.
Okay. Any place, any other school we, we plow this way around?
Well, we did plow up by Williams Park, one, one direction toward the park, but we'd have, back when I used to plow, we used to run the road grader, push it one direction. Here comes all the snow on one side again, and here's two big road graders backing up. It's, it's just unsafe. So we're trying to do a good job for the community and be fair to the, all the other residents also.
Okay. So what's your preference, council? We, I think we have a lot of people here, I don't know if you want to hear from them, what's your preference, council?
Well, I think we've brought it to council to hear from them, so we should hear from them.
I agree.
Okay, how many folks would want to come up and speak tonight?
We have two here.
Two? Okay, three? Okay, why don't we start? If we could keep it to two and a half minutes, is that plenty? Is that enough time?
It's going to be a few main spokes and bits, might be a little bit more than that.
Okay, three minutes each? Four minutes? Yeah, you come on up.
Gordon, if you could state your name and your address, please.
My name is Gordon Anderson, live on thirteen twenty-seven Freer Street since nineteen sixty-six. Been there almost fifty years. They've plowed the snow one way all those years, and they were doing it a couple of years before we even moved in there. I've never seen any problems as far as safety, I'm not aware of any accidents as far as that, those so-called high snowbanks. You always have high snowbanks no matter how you plow it. I've done a little computer analysis as far as plowing. It takes the same amount of trips to plow a street, whether you plow it two ways or one way, with the rare exception of one of these huge snowfalls that might take an extra trip. So I, then the other thing is, I was really dumbfounded when we got the letter in the mail. There's thirty-nine tax-paying households, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars' worth of tax income. Not one of the thirty-nine of us was talked to when this change was made. The only people they talked to was the school. I think it's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordy.
Hi, I'm Nancy Gavin. I live at two sixteen Hoyt Street. I taught at EP Rock School for nineteen years, and we chose to live by the school. The advantage of living by the school is children in your life. You hear the crack of a baseball bat, you hear people cheer. If you sit on your front porch, you can listen to the graduation ceremony. Lots of advantages. However, there are trade-offs. EP Rock School is the only school in the district that is utilized for both elementary and secondary activities. Because of that, parking is a huge issue, and I would guess that you have never heard any of us call the police department to ticket cars. I'm sure you've never heard us complain about people walking through our yards, but we do pay a little price for having this wonderful place to live. Our mail can't always be delivered because people park in front of our mailboxes. Students walk through our yards to shortcut their way to and from school. People going to football games, adults and teenagers walk through our yards because it's closer. People park in our driveways without permission. People block our driveways, and thank goodness, none of us have had to use the ambulance at those times. We love where we live, we do. We chose to be there, but we do have safety concerns. I can't tell you how many times kids have run into the street in front of our house without looking both ways. And because we feel privileged to live there, we are not here to complain. We just want to make sure that the school district and the community knows that we care about our children, and we put up with some inconveniences in order for the school to accommodate so many activities at that location. Soccer, baseball, football, graduation ceremonies, hot air affair. The list is quite long, and parking is a huge issue. I don't suggest anyone add parking. The only sidewalk is on Thirteenth Street. The only marked street for walking is Summer Street. There is no mark on Freer or Hoyt for children to walk because we would lose parking. But children, we do watch out for kids. The large snowbanks are a result of hot air affair, when the whole playground is plowed to allow for the balloons. That's when the banks get super high. It's not from the street so much as from plowing the playground. I have concern about chemicals on my lawn. Because we have no sidewalks in our, our part of town, there isn't a boulevard than a sidewalk. A lot of us have invested a great number of dollars in replacement trees, and we're concerned about chemicals. Also concerned about snow on our mailboxes, and just want to know if those things were taken into account. At any rate, we love where we live, and whatever's decided, we will live with. One, one other thing, I think that there are only six houses around the block that don't have old people living in them.
Now be careful, be careful.
And I'm one of those old people. My, one of my concerns is that with this kind of short notice, some families will have to invest in new snow removal equipment themselves, or hire more snow removal done for their driveways. And so perhaps, if it has to change, maybe it needs a year to change so that the people who live in that neighborhood can save up for bigger snow equipment removal, and that kind of thing. I don't know. At any rate, you know, at least I don't have to make the decision you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Bob McClinskey, live at thirteen oh-one Freer Street. Really, a lot of, the thing I was going to say has already been said, so just a couple of extra points. I just want to reiterate that this, in fact, has been the case for almost fifty years. And so when we bring up this idea of safety, it, to me, it seems completely unfounded in reality. It seems like the school district knows that that's a key word. They just say the word "safety" and the city jumps, and because, oh boy, there must be a safety concern. Well, my kids have gone to EP Rock all those years. My house sits, there's one sidewalk, and my house sits looking straight down that sidewalk. And anytime there's even a little bit of snow, or a big amount of snow, that plow that the school district owns comes right down that sidewalk and blows it out about two hours before school starts. It has never, ever had a stitch of snow on it causing kids to walk in the street. That's absolutely false. I have never seen that, it has never happened. If there's ever that much snow, it's because it's a snow day, and they're not, they're not plowing, period. Problem is that the school district has plenty of heavy-duty snow equipment of their own. I watch it every day from my home. Two or three pickup trucks with plows in the front, big four-wheelers with rushes. They get out there right away, they blow it all away. It's gone. They have the ability to do it like that. So to tell us that, oh, it's, they're not efficient, or it's not safe, is baloney. If there had ever been a safety problem, kids walking on that sidewalk at your school, I would have seen it, my kids would have seen it, I would have heard about it. It has never happened. If you think there had been a safety problem, we would have heard about it sometime in the last half a century. Fifty years it has been like this, and now all of a sudden, there's a safety You might, and, and as she just said, there is that, always that question, well, why should these thirty-nine get this special treatment when nobody else does? And there's sort of that idea of, well, we don't get it, so why should you get it? And the city council might want to say, you don't get it. Well, the fact is, there is a lot, there is not a picnic living where we live. Because of the football games, the bright lights, the loud music, the traffic, which is insane, the people walking across our yards, and the trash, the trash that is there constantly blowing into our yards after every game, and the hot air affair, which is sponsored, I believe, by the city, which causes another amount of problems for us to deal with. So in return for all of that that we have to live with, we get this one tiny little benefit in the wintertime. And the thirty-nine tax-paying citizens get this one benefit, including all the elderly people who live around there, and that's to just plow the snow instead of this way, to plow it that way. The same amount of trips around, it's not that much more efficient for the city to do it one way or the other, they have to make the same amount of trips. So all that being said, we just really think it's, it's somewhat ridiculous at this juncture to all of a sudden make a change. But if we want to talk about possible changes to make things better, you know, we'd be willing to sit down with Mr. Zulley, have one of our residents, perhaps Gordy would be willing to, because he's, he knows the most about it, perhaps somebody from the school district, and the three of them could talk about these things and come up with a solution that we could live with. But to just send us all a letter and say, after fifty years, we're changing this, and it's a safety problem, and it's an efficiency problem, is, it doesn't ring... It doesn't ring true for any of us. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I was trying to draw some pictures, but then I changed my mind. Anyway, I don't hear well, so if you have questions or anything, speak up. Because... But anyway...
Could you give your name and address, please?
I am.
Okay.
Just hold your pants. I'm Lyle. Make sure I live in fifteen thirty-one Freer. And I have a good viewpoint, because I house faces south. We can see what's going on. It's not that we're noisy. But we've watched the plow situation. Yes, it is... It does throw a lot of snow. There's a lot of activity. But what I'm concerned with, if we go to the two-side plowing, plowing both ways, we are going to compound the problem on Hoyt and on Summer. Drifting is a big problem there. Prior to going to the one side, the city employed a snow fence along Hoyt, a snow fence on Summer. The savings that the city has come up with is in over thirty-two thousand dollars by not having a snow fence. And the berm that's from the one-side plowing takes the place of a snow fence. If you had to go back to a one-side... I mean, two-side plowing, you're going to have to have a berm or a snow fence. Today's snow fence, calculated from what I found at Fleet Farm and working with Tom on labor, will run you about four thousand dollars. That's money we don't have. So we have to somehow consider protecting those streets as well. Because if you don't, they will become rough and unplowable. And that has happened even with the berm. So are we dealing with two issues? Are we dealing with the school and their driveways and the amount of snow they see? Or we have to deal with the other side, too? Or you will be out there with a plow every time the snow blows... I mean, the wind blows. So you... You know, it's a choice that you guys have to make. Do we do it? Do we try to come up with a system that takes care of both problems? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like thirty seconds more, please.
Sure.
This is kind of an awkward situation for the council to deal with, because it's hard for them to get all the information that's needed. But I'd like to propose a possible solution, at least on a temporary basis. And one would be three things here. Continue the fifty-year-old snowplowing practice for the time being. Number two, arrange a meeting of one person from the city, one from the school district, and one representing the homeowners to discuss ways to alleviate some of the school concerns. Results of their meeting would be returned to the Public Works Committee for a decision. And if anyone wants to make a motion, they can have this text for that.
Thank you, Gordy. Council, is there any... Last time, anybody else in the audience, then we're... Then we'll close the... And I want to call it a public hearing, because we didn't have a public hearing. Then we'll close public comment, then. Counsel? Comments? I don't think we have anything on the agenda for tonight as far as the... I think what we had on the agenda...
You know, I think making a... Having a little more time to study the problem would be fine by keeping the current policy. You know, if I had to wing something, I would say turn Thirteenth into two-way and then leave the rest of them one-way, because looking at the map here, I see a lot of valid points to it, frankly.
What do you do about Summer Street and the walking trail that gets plowed over?
Summer? You wouldn't go all the way up to the walking... Well, that's...
It stretches all along the school.
Is that the one that has the...
Goes all the way to Seventeen.
Could put in a sidewalk there.
No.
Nobody wants to pay for a sidewalk, right?
Can't put in a sidewalk there right now.
Can't the school pay for a sidewalk?
Oh, sure. After they could rivercrest sidewalk in.
The mailbox parking, in those streets are labeled "no parking." I know that people still park there.
They are not labeled "no parking"?
There's no parking on Thirteenth Street from ten to four on your street, on Thirteenth.
She's talking about Hoyt Street.
I know, I'm talking about Thirteenth Street where the sidewalk is. So if there are other streets that aren't labeled "no parking" during the school day, and if that's something that needs to be considered, I think it'd be considered just to answer that problem, to help you with that problem. But as far as the plowing, in the subdivisions where I live and the area where my district is, and we don't have sidewalks on both sides of the street. So... And we have to deal with, you know, the chemicals and everything else as well. And I just think that it's... Like Tom said, we need to be consistent throughout the whole community. And so when the school addressed me on it, I trust that the principal of the school has a concern. She doesn't have many complaints when it comes to public safety issues. I believe that her... She has that concern, and so I brought it to the attention of Public Works. Now, fifty years is a long time. The population of the city has grown. The population of the school right now is at about ninety-eight percent. I think there's a lot of factors that need to be considered. And I will, as Public Safety Chair, consider the safety of the kids first and foremost in this situation. If that's what the principal is telling me, then that's what I'm going off of, so...
I don't... I wouldn't mind gathering more information and letting us have a meeting with the school, one of the homeowners, and Tom to just sit down, because it may then become clear to all of the parties involved as to just what the issues are. And we may end up with a different solution, which could potentially be better than the one we have. At least it would be additional information, and everyone will get a chance to say their piece in front of each other. And then they can come back, and we can decide on it. And I'm not opposed to getting that, to make a decision.
At the same time, Rich, we passed it already, that the policies changed, that they... Would you suspend that, change that now? Right now, the...
Did we vote on this to change it?
Yeah.
Geez, I didn't remember that one.
No, yeah, we did.
You know, no, it came to Public Works. We didn't bring it to full council. And in all honesty, Tom wouldn't have had to come to Public Works to tell us that they're gonna plow in a different direction. We don't... Really, from a public work standpoint, we do not micromanage the way... Which direction the plows go in. It was a safety concern that came up. When it came to everyone's attention that, you know, the road was being plowed this way. And, yeah, residents in the area do see the piles of snow down Thirteenth. And there's a lot of time spent around that school when there's other roads in District Three and in the rest of the city that are not being plowed. So, you know, Tom brought it to Public Works. We said, gee, for a lot of reasons, this seems to make sense. And I wasn't even aware letters were gonna go out to residents. That was another, you know, nice gesture on the part of Public Works. He could have just made the change. And really, I guess one thing we have to consider, and I'm sorry for everyone who's here who's gonna, you know, be upset with my saying this, but I've never once made a vote to get re-elected, and I'm not going to start now. Part of the reason that, you know, we looked at this as Public Works was that, gosh, we don't do this anywhere else in the city. Why are we making multiple trips around the school, plowing in a way that's, you know, inconsistent with how we plow in other parts of the city? You know, this opens up a whole nother situation where we have to look at it... Now, we're gonna have to look at other parts of the city where there are open fields, and we have to say, are we gonna start plowing differently there, too? You know, we're not punishing anyone in this area. We're just saying, we're going to start plowing here the same way that we're plowing everywhere else in the city. So that's... I mean, that's how this got to this point. And I... You know, if Tom feels like they have a better way to plow than what they've been doing, and the demands on the department have grown, I think we have to pay some attention to that. So I'm not interested, I guess, in micromanaging how Public Works runs their plow routes. And if people on the council feel like, you know, this was just a gross misjudgment on our part, by all means, but then let's open up the books and let's talk about how we're plowing in every other neighborhood in the city.
I agree with Lori. Hundred percent, because, I mean, I could say the same thing for District Two. It's a cul-de-sac district. They're usually the last to get plowed. I get a hundred phone calls on a big snowstorm. When are we getting plowed? When are we getting plowed?
Well, in all fairness...
Should we start going up there and, you know, and change the route when the plows all come from Lake Malibu? Should, you know... I mean, they do a route that they do. We've tried to alter it, and I don't know if that's efficient. And we've been working for the last, I don't know how many years, to make plowing more efficient in the city. He's stood up there and explained to us why it's more efficient to do it this way outside of the safety rationale. I'm staying consistent with keeping plowing efficient. And I agree, I don't think we need to micromanage Tom. I think he's fair in what he... In this situation he makes.
Rich, or not Rich. John, what were you gonna say?
Well, in all fairness, this is not a cul-de-sac. It's a school, and it has space in the winter on at least Freer and Hoyt Street that could still be plowed one way. It's been done for fifty years. You know, we can't just say, well, now we can just change our mind, because, I mean, we have to give some credence to history and the way things have been done. And there's nothing wrong with that.
You got none on First Street, mind you.
What's that?
You got none credence to you on First Street.
Well, you know, that's the way it goes. Can't cry over that. So it seems to me that there could be a reasonable solution regardless of other parts of the city. This is a unique scenario. And it has certain neighbors that are trying to be neighborly and, you know, work with us on how things get plowed. I don't think we need to be so unrealistic to say we can't work something out here, frankly, is what I'm trying to say.
So would it hurt to try the person from the neighborhood, the person from the school, and Tom to sit down and talk? See what they come up with?
I don't know what it can hurt. I saw it as additional information, and everybody gets to speak their mind. And maybe they can come to an understanding of what the issues are and appreciate what we're trying to do.
It can't hurt, but Public Works did take a vote.
Yep.
And so I... At this point, I am...
And that's what the policy is, then?
That's what the policy is. If further discussion wants to be had, that's fine.
The city council overrides Public Works, does it not? I mean, don't we have a... I'm gonna make a motion to have the meeting with the three parties involved and bring it back to council when they have a solution. Obviously, it's snowing out, and things need to get done, so I don't know...
I don't think it's gonna be big tonight, I hope.
No.
I don't...
Well, let's finish his... Finish his motion.
My point is that some... At some point, something is gonna change. Either it's gonna remain currently as it is, or until this meeting occurs, the Public Works is gonna plow. It's gonna plow, I guess.
Is there a second, Mr.?
I'll second it.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second, for a homeowners association, someone from the school, and Mr. Zulie to get together and review what's going on with the plowing as the changes that have been made.
Could I ask, as part of Public Works?
Sure.
If I could be part of that?
Sure. Do you have any problem with that, Lori?
No, that's fine.
I mean, if it's gonna... I'm not a fan of it, by the way, the meeting. But if it's gonna go that way, I guess I'd like to be a part of it.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the motion? Are you saying that you're gonna keep the... What Public Works has currently decided upon until...
That isn't part of the motion.
No, but, I mean, right now, the policy's in place.
Correct.
That they're plowing two ways. So you wanna keep that policy and then have a meeting? And if that... And see what comes from that meeting to possibly...
That's how I understand it.
That's how I understand it, too.
I don't see a problem with that.
So the change that was made...
Yes.
stays, and then we have a meeting to look at other options.
Correct.
I'm okay with that if that's how the motion is.
That's how it was... Yeah.
The only other...
That's correct.
Question would be, are the homeowners in consensus as to... That's up to the homeowners, correct, to determine who their representative's gonna be?
Sure.
Okay.
And, you know, as part of that discussion, and I don't need to be part of it, Kurt, you'll be there. I want us to look at every other area in town where there's an open field, where there's open space, where there's not residences across the road. And I want us to look at, are we gonna start plowing differently in those areas, too? You know, it's come to, you know, comments that have been made to me is, we've done this for forty years, we've done this for fifty years. This council has, you know, some history of looking at issues that have been handled the same way for forty or fifty years and taking a hard look at them. First Street is one of them. The Dinghies are another one. I mean, we can go through the list. I mean, part of our job is to constantly be looking for better ways to do things. We made a very controversial decision a couple of years ago to get all cars off the road during snowplowing. Why? It's safer. It's more efficient for our snowplows. They can get the roads cleared in a shorter amount of time. We've made lots of decisions on this council that have changed the way we've done things. Though that's not a good reason to keep doing much of anything, is because you've done it the same way.
When we had the dock issue, when we had the dinghy issue, we had meetings with people who were involved in that. We listened to those people.
Absolutely.
We tried to work out a solution which was agreeable to both parties. And I don't see this any differently than those situations.
I would agree. I'm just saying, part of that discussion...
And if Public Works wants to look at every other snowplowing area in the city, you have a right to do that.
I'm saying, I want that committee who... Yeah, I want... In that discussion, I want that to be part of it, is where else in the city, if we're going to be consistent, we're gonna be fair to everyone, where else do we need to start plowing differently?
Public Works can do that. It's up to Public Works. Then that come...
Well, part of this...
I guess one thing I have a problem with is that we don't tell anybody in this city hall how to file, how to do their job, you know, on a daily procedure basis. You know, my thought on this is that this is a procedural deal that Tom should be deciding. And, you know, as we've... We've talked about the safety, but as far as the efficiency, and I know, Gordy, you did some kind of computer analysis, but if they're running twelve-foot plows, which Tom could correct me if I'm wrong on that, and you have a ten-foot wing, it's only on the right side. Unless they're going down the road the wrong way, and maybe that's the case, I don't know. They're not getting the benefit of the ten-foot wing. So you go from a twenty-two-foot plow width down to a twelve-foot plow width. There's no way it's the same amount of time.
How much does a ten-foot wing cost?
That's... All right, we have a motion.
Yeah, we do.
And a second to have the folks get together and talk about it.
So just to clarify, it's Kurt, Tom, someone from the school district, and a homeowner, correct?
Correct. And we'll let the homeowners decide who they wanna send to this meeting. Tom, can you be the coordinator of this meeting? Mr. Zulie?
I can certainly try.
All right. Before we get there, I'm looking at every other... I think that might be a monumental task for this group to do. And I'm not sure that there's a time element that we could get that done. If you look at, what, two-hundred road mi... Or two-hundred plow miles of streets, that's a pretty good, big task. And if it starts to snow, we won't have time to be looking at all those. So maybe... Maybe that's what Public Works could do, if you want to. I don't know.
We're taking it on a case-by-case basis here, and if other people...
We want to be consistent.
Wanna present it, I think we're being consistent. But this is a community situation, and yes, we do dictate how the city runs. And yes, we do dictate policy. And yes, we do dictate how we relate with our community and our neighbors. and just being able to get in a room and talk about it is fair.
I think so.
It's totally fair. So, my motion stands, and I guess that's all I have to say.
Okay, does anyone else have anything else to add?
So what I'm hearing is, they're not going to look at other areas, they're just gonna look at-
How, how much time do you think that would take to look at every?
Who's gonna look at it?
Well, this, I assume that was this committee.
Why would this group with the residents, thirty-nine residents involved, talk about the rest of the city? That doesn't even make any sense. It's, it's thirty-nine people who live in the area, it's the school district, and they're meeting to talk about that specific problem.
Okay.
To try to task them with the entire city responsibility is unreasonable.
So then maybe what we need to do is, after that takes place-
Yep.
We can bring it back to Public Works, and we can weigh that in with-
Absolutely.
Looking at some of the other areas in town where maybe we need to rethink about where we're, how we're plowing.
I agree. Alright, one more time, anybody else have anything they'd like to add?
So the motion is?
Motion is?
To have a committee made up of Kurt from the Public Works Committee, Tom Zulley, a representative of the homeowners, and a representative of the school, to discuss possible solutions to this situation, correct?
That's correct.
But that, the decision that was made in Public Works stands until we change it.
Exactly.
Do we need public safety there?
If you'd like to be there, you're more than welcome to be there.
Yeah, since the call came to me, you've put me on that committee.
John, is that okay?
That sounds like a party.
Okay. You'll have to notice that meeting now, probably. One, two, no, no.
Cause they're not on any committees together.
They are not on the same committee.
Well, this is a committee, though, and it's gonna report, you as a council are creating a committee, and so-
Just make sure we do it right.
It does need to be noticed.
So, and ad hoc committee is what they're, you're saying they're creating?
Yes, and they're, one, will they report back to Public?
Public Safety, or Public Works.
Okay.
Alright. Again, one last time, anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Alright, all in favor, the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
I have a question, how many people would want from the homeowners association?
How many do you want?
The motion was for one.
One.
One, one against six, from that six.
It's not against, we're working together, hopefully.
How many will be on each committee, just for a moment, please?
The motion was, a representative from the Public Safety Committee will be Mary, representative from Public Works is Kurt, representative from the school district, Tom Zulley, and one representative from the homeowners, that's what the motion was, that was approved.
And if more people, it's gonna be an open meeting, if people wanna come and attend, they're more than welcome to come and attend.
But the homeowner, whoever the representative is, is the spokesperson, if you will.
And I think we did that because that was your recommendation, Gordy, right?
Yeah, one and one and one.
Okay, well, we changed it, I guess, or the, folks changed it. Okay, moving on. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Update on First Street roof repairs, Troy Thompson, remember the Garland Company? Yep. Troy, we'll give you about two minutes.
Let them clear out.
Let them clear out, and then we'll-
Okay.
In fact, before we get to this, can we go to item twelve?
What's item twelve?
Consider request of Hudson Grill Inc., DBA Sports Club for extension till March first, two thousand fourteen, regarding the continuation of business requirement for its Class B, Class B alcohol license. Say, guys, could you take it outside, please?
We're still in a meeting here, gentlemen. Tom, tomorrow, is that how you say your name?
Yeah, Tom is here from-
Tom, approached Nancy, the city clerk, concerning requesting an extension on his start date due to the ninety-day active business requirement. So he forwarded an email, so he's here to make that request and answer any questions you might have.
There's progress going on.
Oh, absolutely.
That's part of the-
But they need, under the ordinance, they need to formally request an extension, explain the reasons and the progress, and the council can decide whether or not to extend.
Nancy told him to be realistic about the date, rather than, you know, push the date and come back three, four times, so.
How many, how many days do we extend it to? How many did you ask for, Tom?
Mr. Mayor, I asked for another month and a half to March first.
Okay.
I'm all for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
You sure you can do it in a month and a half?
He has March first, so that's actually two and a half, so, almost three, three months, actually.
But it was a month and a half more than the ninety-day period.
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
Cause he didn't get-
Am I sure of that? No, ma'am.
I mean, what's the max we can extend beyond the period?
I don't think the code gives a maximum, and-
It's up to the council.
If he needs an ex, if it doesn't work out the way he thinks he can come back.
How about, we go to April?
Why don't we give him more than that?
How about April first?
Yes, please, because-
Yeah, that's fine.
Let's not stress you out, and let's not have to come back twenty times.
I amend the motion to April first.
Thank you, is there a second?
Yes, second.
John, all those, any discussion?
That looks good so far.
Yep. Good job, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion against, all, thank you.
Thank you, I greatly appreciate it.
Thanks.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Alright, now we'll go back. Troy?
Okay, thank you. Brian and I are here, we were here before to present a procurement of the roof project at the library, the roof, the flat roof and the middle wall panels, or excuse me, the roof panels. And we talked about coming back and just doing a little recap of the project, show you what we have. Yeah, we'll make it quick.
Okay.
Just kinda run through the slides, you can follow along, the, the area that you see on the map is all the areas that were completed, the flat roof and the metal roof panels as well, both the red and the green. Kind of a little recap, we removed the existing flat roof, which was a single ply membrane, and we got a couple pictures of that, and the old metal roof system as well, we added additional insulation which increased the R value, and also positive slope. There was some areas that were pounding water, so we added some additional tapered insulation, so we got rid of all the pounding areas. We put the new modified built-up roof system on all the flat areas. We installed the new stained seam metal roof system on all the sloped areas. We pressure, pressure tested all the roof drain lines, and then replaced a couple defective parts, actually. Removed a couple unused AC units and a couple old roof stacks that were no longer being used, some old satellite dishes. Basically, any obsolete equipment we removed. Repaired damaged duct insulation that was wet from previous roof leaks. Installed security wall in the server room, so you, more of a secure environment for that room, and then repaired and painted some damaged sheet rock. Okay, this is a before picture, just kinda showing the general area, this is directly over the server room, actually.
Maybe some of the areas, these were removed, we'll kinda show you the, the after there.
There's some of the after, cleaned up a little less, there was a bunch of walkway pads that helped, you know, kinda allowed the water drainage, well, this is cleaned up, only left the remaining curbs exhaust, any equipment that had to stay up there, basically. This is showing one of the old skylights, you can see how it was basically set on top of a curb, and curb, and in the corners, they had rubber patches on as well. And then after the case, it's fully wrapped with all sheet metal, so you don't have any issues with that. Another before picture showing, you can see some of the dark areas where it did pond water in the past. This was after we had the rock removed off of the roof surface, and that's a single ply membrane, we did find numerous long stretches of cuts in the, in the roof, actually. And you can see that the contractor there is basically pointing at a long patch that they put on the previous day when they took the rock off, and even overnight, the roof continued to shrink and tore the new patches, so we're continuing patching it as the days went on until it finally got replaced. This is a cross-section of the new roof system put on, just showing the multiple layers again, rather than the one single ply that you had before. There's a total of five layers now in place on all the flat roof areas. This is the old metal roof panels that were in place, again, a lot of corrosion, a lot of leaks, that was a very critical area, that transition between the flat roof and the metal roof, where that ties in.
Right here, yeah.
Show you a picture of that. The old battened strips were coming off, that was in numerous locations, pop riveted, they had been trying to hold them on, basically, touch-up paint, previous, kind of another overview of that. There, you can kinda see some of the rust spots where the panels were leaking in the past when we tore off the old panels. The old little, you can see the metal clips going up the roof surface, that's basically, it was just a very small weak clip, you know, you could just rip off the panels, in essence. This is a cross-section of the new roof system put on, okay, it's a very thick, strong, heavy gauge clip, all put together. This is showing the flat roof area, still has a single ply, but on the sloped roof area, you have all the new ice and water shield. That was before the, the metal panels were put on. And then there shows the flat roof area is completed, and the metal on the sloped area is the ice and water shield. That transition, where you see all the white, that's the new modified flashing's going up. In that area, there's actually more like nine layers of protection in that area. That's where all the protection, we put a lot of concentration around your curves, your penetrations, your transitions, cause that's where problems occur.
In our facility meeting, we were talking about this specific detail, and we're trying to kinda show how that transition is now. That is as bulletproof as you can get, that is a lot of layers there, so.
And you'll show, or you'll see in a couple future pictures here, there, the metal actually continues down and covers all of that as well. So you mean, any snore ice would have to get beyond the metal and beyond all those layers before it could ever become an internal leak.
Exactly.
This was on, this is on the west side of the building, on the front of the building. They tried to roof in, I guess, in essence, a large gutter, and it just doesn't work. So what we did, and you can see here, is we installed new underlayment under there, but then we also put a fully soldered sheet metal gutter there. So you don't have any movement issues, you don't have any issues with puncture or anything like that, just basically designed to last. Just an overview of the new staining seam panel. There's the after picture of that area that was pounding, after rain, doesn't have no pounding issues anymore, all complete. There's an overview, you can kinda see there's quite a few different metal colors, we worked with the contractor to get different colors in the right spot to match what was existing. So hopefully, it's pretty seamless of what people did see and what they do see now. That's just an overview showing one of the sloped areas on the flat roof. That's about it.
Question, I had a, walking on this roof now.
Yep.
What, what do you have for recommend, recommendations, or we need to keep, stay off that roof? What's, is there, cause I think there were some issues where we had stepped through the roof, or people had walked off the-
Yep.
Pathway and caused more damage than, so how do we take care of this roof so we don't have to, uh?
You can walk all over it.
Wear your shoes.
You can walk on the metal, you can walk on the flat.
You can do handstands, you can, you can watch the fireworks.
How about take a snow blower on top?
You can, you can take a snow blower, you can land a helicopter.
Wear shoes.
Wear shoes.
Yeah, you can walk all over, there's-
You can wear golf shoes.
No puncture issues, no, no, nothing to worry about in that respect.
Okay, then I had one question, I think there was a leak in the building after the roof was put on? Where was that at, what happened?
What it was, we, all, part of the project we went through, we pressure tested all the roof drains as well. What the contractor did is, they actually, the boot, they put in a balloon, in essence, in the roof drain and blow that up, and that's how they pressure test the whole line, so they plug all the roof drains. What they did is they put that boot below the connection point where the roof bowl hooks into the plumbing system. There's a rubber no hub connector there. That rubber no hub connector, what we found out later, was torn. So the first time we did the test, it didn't show up, and after a few times, calls from Tom and me, like, this doesn't happen, which it really doesn't.
That's what I was thinking, it's not supposed to happen on a three-
I tell you, we were ready to roof, we were going, going to meet the contractor and rip that whole roof drain out and re-roof it in that area, but we brought the mechanic, the mechanical contractor back out, pulled the test boots up higher, and it showed up.
Okay.
So we ended up replacing that no hub.
We had the mechanical contractor go back again and recertify every connection, after we found out what the problem was, because it, it confused us, you know, we had, we had a problem identifying that. But we have a letter from them certifying that those items are all covered, all the drain connections now are solid and tight, so. Apologize about that.
No, I, it was a little bit concerning.
Well, we were confused too. I'm glad we found out what it was.
Doesn't normally happen, more than once, so.
It looks good.
Yeah, it's awesome. The roof, folks, the roof's gonna last forever, so as long as it's, it's a keeper, the building is very watertight. On a personal note, I guess I'd like to thank Tom throughout this whole process, Chief Johnson. When we started, we had a little hiccup on the start date, and he was very accommodating for that. There was, you know, it's a construction job, and there was a lot of debris and things flying, and, and to get this work done, and, and they were very good, they were good to work with. You know, Devin, obviously, Mayor Burchill, you were awesome throughout this process, so thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions for him? Thanks for the update, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, twelve B, consider two thousand fourteen capital budget. Neil, did we skip over Karen, I think I did. Karen, let Karen go first. Sorry. Should've had you go first, about an hour ago, huh?
That's no problem. Just an update on the project's Red Cedar Canyon Valley View on Pinnacle Bay. The water main's been installed and has had pressure tests and conductivity testings passed. And the asphalt, I should say, base course was placed, the first lift, we're gonna put the second lift on next year. So that's basically probably gonna be it for the project updates for a while now.
So do you want me to pull it off the agenda until you tell me?
Yeah, I think that would, well, Bostrum Office Building, they might be doing a hydrant lead next week, so.
Let me know, if you want to know the agenda or not.
Alright, any questions for Karen? Karen, have we scheduled a, a time to meet about meeting or having office hours? Have we scheduled that, or have you met with Tom?
I have met with Tom and Denny, and Denny was gonna talk to you about that. You were out, has he, I'll talk to Denny.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, Neil, you're up, consider two thousand fourteen capital budgets.
If you recall, when we went through the, the exercise to create a five-year plan with Ellers, they created a financing plan. Their financing plan was predicated on, throughout that five years, increasing the levy to a maximum of five point two five mils. And that would enable us to finance, it was about fifteen million dollars of projects over, over that five years, and that would assume debt issuance in two thousand, two thousand thirteen, to cover thirteen and fourteen capital, one for fifteen, sixteen, and then one for seventeen. What, at the end of the year, best guess is where we're, where we're going to be, because these projects are ongoing. And we do have funds encumbered, but I believe our unencumbered balance in the capital project fund at the end of the year will be about three million dollars. Of that, the exact number is a million nine sixty-nine one ten, was our projects that were included in that five-year plan and scheduled to be done in two thousand fourteen, and there's a listing of those, you know, in the handout. In addition to that, there were a couple of other capital requests that did make it in that five-year plan that are in here now also for consideration, and those are from the police department for both, you know, replacement for their guns, and then for the police video systems. So, I mean, with the total of those, you're at two million eighty-one thousand one, one hundred ten dollars.
Back up for just a second there. What system is that, the last one you talked about?
The car video, the cameras in the car.
Cameras in cars. That wasn't approved.
That was not included in there, but when we went back, and, and that's why I had mentioned that, million nine sixty-nine one ten was included in the five-year plan for financing. These are other projects that have, you know, been submitted by the departments, and, you know, we just, I put them in there for consideration. One of the issues here, and probably one of the, the major issues in moving forward with all or a portion of this, is that when we borrow, when you borrow funds, when we bond for it, we have an eighteen-month expenditure period. Before, we would be subject to reporting, you know, arbitrage, and arbitrage is potentially earning money in excess of what we would, you know, borrowed the money out.
First, that's not an issue today, is it?
It's not an issue today, no. It, it could be in the future, but we have no control of that.
No.
But I think one of the keys in here is that to avoid any kind of, you know, analysis and reporting of potential arbitrage, we would have these, have these projects that we bonded for done by April two thousand fifteen, which basically means it's two thousand fourteen construction period.
So we have another million, basically a million dollars, million one?
Right, and if you look at that million dollars, when you consider how we used that this past year, you know, in April, we budgeted, the council budgeted almost seven hundred thousand of those dollars, and that allowed us to get a head start on some of the projects that we ultimately bonded for. So, I mean, there is considerable wisdom to keeping a balance there, because, number one, we never know what's going to happen.
So, Tom, and, and we need to, we need to start now, or January for our projects?
I would think so, yes.
I mean, so we can get them, I'd like to see them done not in September or October, but maybe in June?
Or April? You know, if we can take action now, I mean, if you look at, you know, and the ones that are probably the most problematic are if you look at the projects that were included for funding and that we bonded for, in there was six hundred twelve thousand dollars for mill and overlay. Well, I mean, that's gonna take some, some engineering, and then by the time you bid it, and you wanna get that done this construction season.
Yes.
So, I mean, taking action now enables us to move forward on things like that on a much more appropriate timeframe.
So, on your over, or on your mill and overlay time, can you have a list of, to us?
I can give it to you in a few minutes, I just, actually, today, I went and I got measurements of the roads.
I don't think we need it tonight, but I mean-
I have it.
Well, but I-
I'd like it right now.
You can take those, those dimensions and those lineal feet, to Karen, she can calculate the costs that we have from this year's projects and get a pretty, pretty good estimate of the cost, and then we also can review these streets that I identified.
And then we'll ship it out for bids?
Well, another, another thing that we should, you know, do is, that we can do our Whistler Report, plug in a certain amount of dollars, and then that'll actually generate a list of roads that the Whistler Report recommends, so we can compare them with the list of ours.
Yeah, let's take it back to the next Public Works meeting, let's get going on it, if we can. Is that what you're?
Once this is approved, then.
Right, once this is approved, that's, you know, that gives them the guidelines for how much they can spend. Right, once this is approved, that's, you know, that gives them the guidelines for how much they can spend and bring back the appropriate projects to match the funds available.
Okay. Well, everybody knows we have the money. We bonded for the money. We have the money, and it's just a question of the specifics of the projects, correct?
Correct. We had, we had already, when we bonded...
Haven't we approved this already? Or haven't?
No, you haven't taken action to physically approve it. We approved the two thousand thirteen projects.
In an amount.
Physically, you would need to appropriate the funds for two thousand fourteen projects.
Not necessarily the projects themselves, but...
You would be approving, no, you would be approving these projects?
Right.
That are on the list.
Okay.
And, you know, even if it didn't happen at this meeting, you know, potentially, you know, if you would like...
How about we have it for the first meeting in January? Or is that too late?
You're already delaying Public Works, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Then we'll have it...
Next meeting?
Next meeting. Can you get it done by next meeting? Make a recommendation?
Sure.
Okay. Public Works, is that okay? But these are, and the other thing I'd like, if you can, could we get hard copies, because these are...
Sideways?
I don't know if anybody else is having trouble.
I, I keep flipping it.
I don't know how to flip it.
Yeah, but then it wants to flip back.
No, I keep flipping on me on the hand.
You have to set it down and turn it.
What's that?
You have to set it down and turn it.
Okay. See, we, we...
So, I, I have to hold it crooked.
Correct, Neil, that the numbers that are in here were preliminary, preliminarily approved as part of the five-year plan.
With the exception of the two items that were added for the police department.
Right. Okay.
Which was to replace the handguns and the video system?
Correct.
That's the in-car video system or the lapel?
In-car.
In-car is what was requested.
Has that been to Public Works?
I thought, Public Safety?
Public Safety.
I thought it was the lapel that we were requesting. Okay.
Why don't you take that back to Public, take that up at Public Safety?
So, you want this on the December sixteenth agenda?
Yep. Is that all right for everybody else?
Yeah.
And if we could get hard copy, this would be great.
I'll mail, get those out to you tomorrow. I'll send them as a separate email.
Yeah, because I haven't figured out how to copy off this yet.
There's a printer in the back of the room. You can actually print from here.
Yeah, I don't, but, oh, there's a printer in here, isn't there?
There is.
Okay. Anything else? Do you, do you want any action on it, since we're going to bring it back?
I, I think it's something that, and, you know, I think I communicated the need to get moving sooner rather than later, and that's the most essential.
And Tom could get that to Public Works by the next meeting, and then we'll have it by our next council meeting. Good job, Neil. Thank you. And, and, and Tom, appreciate that. I don't have any recommend, recommendations or communications from the mayor, future agenda items, city council people, anything that you would like to see added. City administrator, anything?
Nope.
City attorney?
Nope.
If not, I'd take a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much. Good meeting.